We'll begin this meeting and do all others. Catherine, if you'd like to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a fairly full agenda tonight with two different presentations coming in, one looking at the competency-based education in the district that we're moving towards, and then a second one for the school board's report session for school board roles and responsibilities and superintendent roles and responsibilities for the school board to be here tonight. So that, so we're going to make some amendments to the agenda as we go through. We're going to sort of defer, we'll have the student report in a second, we'll defer the superintendent report to committee reports, and after Catherine's, we can move right into the competency-based education. If you guys play. Catherine, if you'd like to go ahead and do your presentation. Oh, I forgot to comment. Please, okay.
Wait there.
I selected to open the floor for public comment at the town meeting office, so if any residents would like to come to speak, please feel free to do so. Anything else? See, no one rushing to the mic, let's proceed with Catherine before.
All right. First sports this week, fourth basketball game seven to one with their next game tomorrow at row 10 at 7:00 PM, and their next home game will be 2:00 AM against me at 7:30. Girls' basketball game seven to three with their next game tomorrow at row 10 as well at 5:00 PM, and their next home game will be 2:00 AM against me at 6:00 PM. Hockey is 52 with their next home game will be the 20th against Oregon State students at 5:00 PM. Swimming will have a meet at Woodsboro January 20th at 8:00 PM, and indoor track has the division three meet January 21st, 5:00 PM at 1:00. At the elementary school, we have a big jump show January 20th, that will be at the high school at 3:45 PM. And for the junior senior high school, the fund of parent involvement is pushed to January 23rd, and that'll be 7:00 PM in the cafeteria at the high school. And the National Arts Society is collecting conferences and donations right now. If you have any formal or conferences, we would like to review part of that.
Thank you very much. Here, if we'd like to introduce the next one. Sure, well, I'll introduce the superintendent and the secretary and introduce the other schools.
So thanks for having us today. Glad to be joined by Allison Boudreaux, who is sixth grade science, and Allison also brings a wealth of experience as she's gone through this process at another school. Also, assistant principal Matt Foster has done this at his previous school in Maine where they were moving to competency-based education, and obviously, principal Christopher Mizony is here as well to talk about where we're at. So each of us is going to have points, and I know we're going to talk, but to start out, we're going to start with goals. The why, what, who, where, and how, and this is kind of going to be our beginning point so you can kind of, you know, see if we've done our job today, have kind of given you the background of CBE. And I've also got ICANN there because at the end of tonight, we're hoping that all of you can understand and talk about these five components as a school board and with us, that you're understanding it a little bit more in greater depth.
And that relates back to the, right? The dust, and we're going to get to that.
So the history of CBE, we've included a link there provided by New Hampshire DOE that really talks a little bit about New Hampshire High School transformation. The digital slideshow was shared with all of you, so you can sort of peruse that, kind of like go through that sort of word for word, but we've got a few schools listed there that have fully adopted this. We've had members of the team visit different schools to sort of see how it's running classrooms to be part of channels.
So I just guess we may need to move forward to microphones.
Sure. That's fine. Thank you. That's all right. So we've visited numerous schools, different parts of the competency-based education team at the high school to get a feel for how schools are adopting this, how they're putting it in the schools, and one of the big takeaways that we've taken is that, much like the goal of CBE and really sort of individualizing this for students, is it's very specific to schools, and they're adopting it in ways that fit the needs of their learners. So we're looking at really the work that we put in, how is this going to benefit the learners at Newmarket? That's really sort of our big goals, making this as learner-specific as possible. As you can see there, one thing Maine has really adopted, mandated that graduates of 2020 are on a proficiency-based diploma, and that was some of the work that I did before I came here at Noble High School in Maine. So we bring some experience to the team, myself and Allison, to be able to help along with that work because it is, as you'll see more in the presentation, it is a large undertaking.
One of the things that we felt was really important was to make sure that as we move forward in talking about CBE, that we all have a common understanding of some of the vocabulary that comes up throughout. So we've provided some definitions, and I'll go through and explain these different terms, and then there's a more concrete example coming your way so that hopefully these will come to a little bit of life and become a little bit clearer. So competency is an overarching concept that incorporates lots of different standards that are all interconnected, and those are developed by grade level, by discipline, with lots of work from teachers and looking at model competencies. Standards are non-negotiable learning targets that students have, and those are things that come to us from the Common Core standards for English Language Arts, mathematics, and the Next Generation Science standards. So when we use that term standards, those are the things that we're referring to there. Some of the language that's used in those standards is not necessarily friendly for students and parents and people outside of the realm of education, so we can take and turn those statements into ICANN statements so that it's a little bit more understandable for students what their responsibilities are, what are they needing to know how to do at the end of a certain lesson, at the end of a unit by the time they graduate. And that term ICANN can be changed depending on the age level of the student, and the language within the ICANN statement would be developmentally appropriate for the students. In order to help students understand their progress that they're making and where they are along the line of meeting certain competencies, teachers will often use rubrics that define in writing what the expectations are to meet those standards, and you can have various delineations in there, but that defines for students what the expectations are. And then there are two types of assessments that go along with, really, education in general. These aren't specific to competency-based education, but they come up a lot in education conversations in general. So formative assessments are used to monitor student progress along their way, so these are things that may happen day in and day out. So an example, today I introduced the idea of a hypothesis to the sixth graders and talked about how we write one in the context of the lab that we're doing. So I then collected all of those, and I'm going to read through those, give them feedback before we move on to the next part of the lab. So I'm getting a quick assessment about where they are, and I know how I can help them improve from here. So that's an example of a formative assessment used to monitor their progress. And a summative assessment is used to measure their mastery of that learning target, that competency at the end, so it could, again, take on a number of variations, but that's looking at the mastery piece at the end of your learning progression.
So with help from our friends at KnowledgeWorks who provide for us lots of good material, just sort of comparing traditional education or education that we may have been used to as opposed to sort of where we're headed with the competency-based piece, looking at school culture first, and if you look up here, we've got, it's broken down into sort of six target areas. That's actually how we walked through with our full faculty, and we sort of split up our entire faculty into very representative groups from different departments and made sure that, you know, it was as representative as possible. But the first one is school culture, and if you look at sort of the difference, you'll see the traditional pieces on the left side and where we're sort of headed on the right side and how they compare. The learning happens sort of inside that traditional classroom and within the model that we've been used to. We're now sort of moving that piece, that students have a wide range of learning experiences, whether it be at school, online, in the community, through extended learning opportunities and things of that, of that nature. A lot of that piece can be sort of student-driven, whereas a lot of it was sort of the teacher driving it based on those standards. We know what the standards and competencies are that will be addressed, but sometimes you can say to a student, how would you address this? And sort of allow them, again, you'll hear us say, putting them in the driver's seat quite a bit. That learning progression, sort of talking about and making it okay to say, okay, we expect, I expect my fourth grader, by the time they're finished with fourth grade, to know this, this, and this. We know that kids learn at different rates, and sort of that progression piece is, we're expecting students to master these competencies, and it may be, it may take more than one try, it may not happen at the year based on their chronological age, and that that's okay, because the goal is not when, it's how and what. And so that piece is really important, and that those standards, they're aligned to the competencies that we want them to be able to demonstrate are aligned to college and career-ready standards on some of those pieces that we're sort of looking at when we build the profile of our upper graduates. That learning pace, that a student traditionally always advances at an educator's pace, you know, I have to get through this much of the curriculum by this point in time in the year, and we know that that doesn't fit. You know, kids don't always sort of master those pieces at the time, at that snapshot in time, and know that that piece is okay. If you look specifically at writing, you know, you could make an argument, I think most English teachers would say, is you might turn in a fantastic written piece, but it's never really finished, there's always more you can do, and so acknowledging that it's about earning and not, it's about learning, not earning. So we really want to sort of demonstrate that we know what we're doing, not, oh, I got an 86, but I think I can get a 90. It's, no, I want to do this well because this is what a final product should look like. That instructional piece, that every classroom has one teacher and designs and delivers instruction with sort of very little nuance for the different learning styles or types of learners, that sort of changes a little bit, and that educators will work collaboratively, not only with each other and with students, but also with community partners and developing sort of a unique learning plan for students. Some learning plans might look similar for perhaps Kim and Elizabeth, theirs might look the same, but it could look very different than Al's or Ingrid's, and acknowledging that that's okay because that's what kids are coming to us with.
I just want to connect back to when the school board met in its workshop session a year, almost a year ago, I think we talked a lot about goal setting and positioning as part of what the board articulated, which is really more personalized experience and competency-based is that movement from what's at a very initial of more of a one-size-to-all education, and I don't want to say only that, but more that way to a much more personalized education. And so what they're articulating is that movement, that journey, and there are many steps along the road.
And that's a great point, and the other piece with the personalization piece is, that's a word that can be sort of polarizing, and personalization of the seven of you sitting there doesn't mean it's seven different things, but it could mean this group is pretty similar. It could mean that there are seven different ways to attack this, but that personalization doesn't mean that every single person does something different, but having sort of a menu options for those distinct learning styles. The last two pieces are assessment and grading policies, and we're purposely not going to address those tonight because in all the work that we've done and all of the research that we've, whether we've gone to other schools and worked with other groups, is that those are really our long-range pieces, and those are the things that we should address last before we can start assessing and grading competencies, we have to be really comfortable that we know them inside and out, and that when we start to go through the walk with students, that we're able to talk to those before we start assessing and grading. And so those pieces, we anticipate throughout this process, which will be long-term, that we'll be back multiple times, so if you could sort of, as the Pinterest folks say, put a pin in those two pieces, we'll probably get to those the next, one of the next times we're back to present. But really, the main impetus here is putting kids in the driver's seat when it comes to their own learning.
So with the driver's seat as a nice segue, we wanted to put together something very concrete to try to make sense out of these terms and give you a specific example of what this might look like. So this is actually the example that we shared with staff when we were talking about this earlier in the year. So on page four, the definitions that I shared earlier, if you have that available, if you want to have that out at the same time so you can compare them if you'd like, but we looked at, in our example, the overarching concept that we're hoping students achieve is driving a car. So that's sort of the long-term, large goal that involves a lot of smaller goals along the way. The standards, and these are only some of them, but the standards that students would need to meet in order to successfully accomplish that competency, to drive a car, they have to be able to change gears, they have to be able to turn it on and off, use the gas and brake pedal, park, and exercise lane control. Sure, there are many more, but those were five that we chose to highlight. So if I focus on the parking one, within parking, there are still some smaller things that they need to be able to do. So in order to be able to say, I can successfully park a car, you have to be able to do that without hitting other cars, you have to be able to parallel park, pull in front and back in, so there's several different types of parking that you have to be successful with, and you have to be able to park on a hill, leave your car, and not have it roll on you or away from you. So you need to be able to do those things, and those are broken down into language that's a little bit more friendly to the upcoming driver. So there's all of that work that goes into each of those individual standards, and then students need to demonstrate mastery of those standards to be able to say, I can successfully drive that car. So hopefully, that helps make those terms a little bit clearer with a concrete example that we're all familiar with.
And now we're going to give you a little formative assessment to see what you've learned. Now, just one of the strategies our distinguished teachers used, and the first one is, I took attendance, so we knew that Catherine, I apologize, you're going to have to stand there for Mr. Kinnison, so we knew he wasn't going to be here tonight. So one of the strategies, an informal sort of assessment strategy is, just a thumbs up if you are familiar at all with either you know how to swim, you've watched swimming, or you're familiar with some swimming terms. Good. So I'm going to have you each choose a card. Just getting you ready for midterms. So your assignment right now, and that's okay, because...
No, it isn't.
And this is where we'd say, think, pair, share, partner up, raise your hand, we can come around and say, hey, this stroke. So what everyone has in front of them are five different swimming strokes. I don't know which ones you've got, but what we're going to ask you all to do is come up with at least one ICANN statement for the specific stroke that you have. So you've got your standard, who has treading water?
Me.
Okay. That's the one I can actually do, Kim. So that one, you want to come up with one ICANN statement. If you were going to say, this is what I expect all kids who need to tread water, they need to know this. Same with the breaststroke, the butterfly, the backstroke, freestyle. Now I can give you one that you can all use, you all need to be able to hold your breath. That's probably really important. So we're going to give you guys two minutes to come up with at least one ICANN statement. If you're flying on that already, then you can come up with two or three, and if you need help, just raise your hand and we'll be around to help you. You're good? If you've got one, then we need two more, Al. What happens if you're bored, if you're bored, you're going to cause problems for other kids. All right. Okay. If you've got one, come up with two more. Like, holding your breath would be one that transcends, but you can stretch yourself to think it's a different one. Give you about 30 more seconds, and then you guys are going to report out. So we don't want to call anybody out, so we'll go from...
Me, me, me.
Sounds like we have a volunteer. Mr. Zink, which standard were you working on?
I'm on the backstroke.
Perfect.
I can float on my back, I can hold my breath, I can kick my feet, I can move my arms.
Excellent. All right. Well done. Who wants to go next, or do I assign someone?
I have freestyle, and I'm assuming I can choose which one I want to do. I can do side stroke though, and not much of anybody does anymore, I'm surprised.
Sure. So what do we need to know to start the side stroke, Ingrid?
You have to go, how's this your dick?
What do my arms do on a side stroke?
Pick the apples.
Pick the apples. Ask it.
Oh, look at that, I have two people putting the flowers in the basket.
I think you're too great for that.
Great. Now, I'll pause here for one second because if you had a student who maybe had some motor skills and couldn't sort of write that piece, or someone who had some issues getting ideas from here to here, I might ask them to show us, and isn't that demonstrating that competency?
Or draw.
Or draw. Or some kids might go to swim practice, take a video of it, and present that. So that's that personalization piece that sort of fits into play. Ms. McKinney, which one did you get?
I did the backstroke. You can pull your head out of the water. I can pull my head out of the water. I can breathe with water dripping down my face, and I can get my body out of the water.
Awesome. Kim?
I can treading water. I can keep my head above water. I can move my arms. I can move my legs.
What do I do with my hands when I'm moving my arms and the, what might they look like?
Um, well...
Not scooping.
It depends on what sort of situation.
Frosting a cake?
Because if you're drowning, you might not be able to get your hands thrown in the water.
And if we're drowning, we're probably not doing any of these strokes well. Catherine, what did you get?
I had the butterfly.
And Catherine has a bunch of assessments in the next week, so...
That's not fun. I can flutter dick, and I can lift my torso above the water, I can, I have a good rhythm for air.
And what would a good rhythm sound like, or look like, or how would you explain that to somebody? You don't have to show us.
I won't do it, but coming up every two seconds, or being able to catch that breath while you're coming up.
Very well done.
So we just walked you through this, and now I'll raise back to the driving because we can see the ICANN statement. So I get back. So as you can see, Chris walked you through, swimming was pretty easy, it's real life, we've all done it, right? Driving a car, most of us in the room have all done it, but there are skills, all these skills we can assess our kids on to make sure that they can demonstrate driving a car. It's not 80%, okay? Do you want an 80% driver? That means 20% of the time they're going to crash it, right? We want our kids leaving here with the skills to demonstrate that, and we can assess them all different ways, but when they're demonstrating these standards to us and the skills, they're becoming competent, and then they'll be leaving our classrooms competent as they become college and career-ready, going off to work, going in the military services, or going to post-secondary education. So they're going to be able to demonstrate. And to highlight that a little bit more, we'll give you the real life.
While he's flicking through, one of the examples, so Ingrid, the, you said the side stroke was what you chose as a freestyle, correct? So we may get to a place where our whole class, that might be one of our, one of our standards. Ingrid might not have had that right away, or Ingrid might have it and Kim may not, but let's say if we looked at that snapshot in time where, I'm sorry, you didn't know it by April 15th, that means you fail and we move on, you have to repeat the course. Kim may have gone to the pool with practice, she may never have gotten the perfect side stroke down, but she's able to come in and explain to us and say, hey, Mr. Mizony, can I make some time with you after school? Because I didn't know the side stroke the day that you, that we all sort of assessed on it, but I went back, I re-learned it, I practiced, I can explain it to you, I can show it to you. It's not perfect, but I can show you that I'm competent and I master the pieces that go along with that. So it's really kind of a neat way to look at it, and it's kind of, as a teacher, I think it opens a lot of possibilities, so it's kind of neat.
So this is in the slide that we showed you, but here's a model from the, our New Hampshire Department of Education on what math competencies would look like through different grade spans. And so here's the competency over here. So the competency is math symbolic expression. Here's your ICANN statements, okay? So these are the standards that are associated with it, and they have the national standards out here, and those numbers represent what these kids are working on, these skills, they're just a broader approach. There are more words, basically. But again, here's the competency, symbolic expressions for math, here's the standards to be able to abstract and quantitate, recognize making appropriate use of symbols, and then here's the ICANN statements. I can represent whole numbers. This is something we can assess our kids on. They'll know what we're looking for in class. They're going to leave going, I can do this, okay? So this is how it's going to translate with the classroom. And we've got models for language arts and writing, Next Generation Science standards, social studies is coming onboard in math. So we're going, these aren't what we adopted yet, but we're going to take it and, as Matt said at the beginning of the presentation, personalize it for what our graduates are going to look like. We've got some great models from around the state, but again, they don't fit all Newmarket graduates, so we're going to really make it fit Newmarket graduates. So this is what you'll be seeing, and this is how we'll be working with our kids and preparing our teachers, but preparing our future when they leave Newmarket.
Chris, how do you, I mean, there could be quite a few ICANN statements for such, do you try to minimize the...
Yeah, so...
There's references on how many you use depending on what standard it is.
Two of them.
Yeah, and oftentimes, too, Al, that's a great question, is you might have the same thing in science, so this allows us to assess kids in different disciplines, so I don't just have to teach it math. If I'm going to be checking out multiple shapes and ways and expressions, I might get that in English class. So our teachers might be able to talk and say, Chris Andruski's showing that to me every day, I don't know why is he struggling in math? And the teacher can talk and say, let's try this approach. So I can demonstrate it, and it just doesn't have to be in a classroom, it can be in any classroom, it can be outside the classroom.
You see it a lot with the English Language Arts standards because they are, they're very sort of cyclical, but there's also a lot of them. So to sort of think that getting all kids to a place where they're demonstrating mastery of the ELA concepts in 12 years by one person every year is pretty difficult. However, in a social studies class where you're writing a doc, you know, a document-based question, you're answering document-based questions, you're working on some discrete ELA standards even though you're in a social studies class. Same could be said for science, we've got to back up claims and evidence. So, so again, we're, especially in the middle level and a little bit with our ninth grade team, that teaming approach also allows you to sort of further personalize and sort of cross over curriculum areas to make sure you're addressing multiple standards.
The last thing I would just highlight, as you can see, that this competency has a grade span of K through 8. We're not just working on it in kindergarten, we're not just working on it in eighth grade. There is introductory points that we have throughout the entire K-8 education of our kids, and there's no longer that we should be having gaps because kids are going to move at the pace they can, so no longer is a kid that's in kindergarten, they've already mastered this, you can start looking over here, start pushing our kids, start individualizing that rather than holding them back.
And that was going to be my question, what do we do with the students who are at either end of the extreme on the competencies, the kids who are particular women that gets to those structures of who would go by the schools and others in terms of grade?
I can take that one. Sure.
Not letter grades, but like from fifth grade to sixth grade, from 12th grade to big white world.
Yeah.
How do we deal with that, that extra time? Some of kids might need more introduction time.
Some of it is the more time, but again, more time itself is not, is not the, it's not the intervention, it's what happens during that time, which is a great point.
Right, right, but I mean, some of it's developmental, like...
Some is, and some develop, yeah.
Postorder coordination, that kind of thing that happens when the body's ready.
So if we went back to the example of driving, for instance, let's say we've got our learner who's sort of mastered all of those skills, say, okay, great, let's try and do it with a five-speed, or let's try and do it with a dump truck, or let's add backing in a straight line for 50 feet. So you start to look at some other standards to sort of stretch those, or if we went back to the one of a hill start, a hill start with a, you know, with a pull-up emergency brake as opposed to the push-down, or a hill start with a, again, a stick shift versus an automatic, so you can kind of stretch those ones. Your sort of minimum is, we want everyone to be able to drive an automatic in these sort of ways, but if we're ready to sort of stretch and say, hey, you know, this, this kid really, he has this nailed, or she has this nailed, let's teach her how to do it with standard.
Or it might be that we're satisfied, and for this student, they've learned what they need to master in driving, so we're moving on to something entirely different.
But we're still working on driving with, with our students who haven't mastered it yet, and that, that is a challenge for teachers, and I think largely, you look at your middle schools and your Unified Arts, they've sort of had that challenge throughout. It'll be a little different shift for high school, especially when you sort of work through that, that piece of leveling the classes, but it's been our reality for a long time, especially as middle-level learners and Unified Arts teachers.
And I would say part of that is about our response intervention system, which is being placed from kindergarten through, really, if kids are not meeting, right, the standards and are showing that they need some extra support, then we have intervention time built in and personnel identified to work with those students and provide them some extra support to help them meet those standards at the grade level. If they're already exceeding them, again, it's on us to sort of move them into the next step. already exceeding them, again, it's on us to sort of move them into the next set of standards where it's appropriate for them to be learning. And that might mean they're going to another classroom for some, some instructional time. It might be that they're working with a mentor. It might be that they are doing a more individualized project. There are a lot of different ways to achieve that. And, and again, I think that, that's part of sort of building that classroom culture and some of those shifts you were talking about earlier, right? Traditional school worked very much in isolation. And school in 2018 can't work that way in order to continue.
Because of practical matters, you've got twenty kids in class and, you know, we all vary from our strengths to weaknesses. Clearly, you can't do an individual... I, I use that IAT for everybody, but wouldn't you group the three or four that are similar together that...
You might group and regroup. And I think one of the things that I've reflected on a lot, especially in the last five years, is also looking at an individual, and I'll use myself as a student. If I was particularly, you know, strong in English and the writing standards, and I was able to sort of move on with my H-level peers, fantastic. But also demystifying the fact that I may not have been that strong on my mathematical concepts. So, even though I might have moved forward here, here, I still needed that additional time and mediation. So, I think a lot of it is really sort of breaking down what traditional, how we moved along chronologically is, and really just demystifying and saying, "Yeah, not everyone's a complete package. You might be really good at this, this, and this. And right here, we're gonna give you a little bit more time." But not saying, "Okay, you're repeating the entire fifth grade because your math skills were not at the fifth grade level." You know? Acknowledging the individual pieces that go into an entire person's education.
And we're not forcing somebody to do that. So, I might not have passed, I might have not have completed my fourth grade. But then what will happen in, for my math, right? So, then I would move on to sixth grade, but then I would have somebody kind of backing me up and pushing me in my math.
We keep, we keep you at the standard.
And if I'm in practice and my math failed in your lab, first of all. All right. I have my question. So, and again, going on the classroom size of twenty, twenty, twenty years. How are we going to meet these... The question you're asking is each individual person, if you were one teacher, and we're only, you know, they're only given an eighty to eight, that's a, a lot of work. And then we're gonna have eight hours shift.
It's a pretty good leap of faith, again, to go back to that, sort of demystify what we've been used to. And so, if I use Allison's team in sixth grade, for instance, you've got four teachers who have the same teaching schedule. And we've moved kids, whether it be forty-five minutes or ninety, to say, "They're gonna go to Allison for science, then math for math, Chris for English." Looking at that time and how we employ our resources really is the way that we're gonna sort of start to, to pick away at this. So, I might have a humanities block where my social studies and my English teacher are working on those, those standards and those competencies. And maybe three times within that block, I go to see three different people for work on those three different things. So, the planning is gonna look very different, but also how we use that time and where kids are moved. And again, we're not moving whole herds from station to station. It's now really that individualized piece. So, it really takes sort of a leap of faith to say, "Okay, then this is the piece." It's really a departure from how we've always sorted.
Get it out of your head.
Yeah. But, and not throw it out, like not say it wasn't important. We have to acknowledge that it happened and some parts are, are good.
All right. So, our policy, so this is, here we're looking at this. And you have a child that has met and gone beyond. So, now we're stuck. We're looking at that person. When we, so what, what's the point for us?
Why would we be stuck if we're not capable of that? Ever in the world? They have anything more to learn? So, that would be my question.
So, but you're running, you're running into roadblocks, right, in the policies. You're running into issues along the way. So, we're, we're gonna have to look at our policy.
So, I, we always should look at our policy. I would say there, I don't think there are any roadblocks in the ways that there used to be because we have the opportunity to offer students extended learning opportunities. We have full enrollment opportunities. We have university for some, um, in commuting distance with public transportation that can take students there. We have online classes and learning opportunities. We have extended learning opportunities for the...
So, we're gonna start paying attention and all that, making sure that... I mean, that's, that's the work.
It's gonna go beyond paying attention. It's gonna be part of what we do.
Right. So, again, it's a huge shift. And I think, you know, you've all asked some really wonderful questions. And what's best about your questions is that you're recognizing the challenge and the work and the staff as we proceed. These are questions that we have to answer as a group. And how, like, how are we gonna proceed? And how is that gonna look? How is that transition for a student that's finishing what used to be grade five, but may not be ready for grade six, next to a peer who may be close to being ready to what we used to call grade seven? Those are some of the challenging questions that we have to answer. And that's the road we're taking with staff. And what kind of system changes may we need to take in place? What kind of policies do we need to look at? That's what CBE is, is gonna do for us. And those are some, it's some challenging work that you're recognizing here tonight.
In a lot of ways, that's going on today with students who, you know, may be below level on certain things with peers that are a grade or so above. And, you know, I think in a unstructured way, the team, sixth grade team is an example, as we have a member here, are coming together to say, "We have this student or this group of students who are on a level. What do we need to do as a team to beat this person's education up?" So, I think that, you know, is it, it's something that's occurring, kind of like the shared services thing, that was happening undercover, not efficiently, and we're sort of strategizing and making it real. And, um, really looking at, the thing that excites me the most about all of this is really looking at and knowing each of our, our children as individuals, strengths, weaknesses, challenges, and how that will help them moving forward, knowing that there's a group of people, and again, this goes on today too, wanting them to, them to do and be their best, whatever that looks like, and achieving competencies in whatever areas that they want to. Just having that boost and knowing that when you leave Algebra II, you didn't get a sixty, which what does that really mean? But you know all the standards required to tab this graph with that class now and how you can utilize that going forward. It's very exciting.
And I love your sixty example because we've, we've sort of, our mantra is it's about learning, not earning. So, you're really getting away from, "Wow, I, I got an eighty-eight. What does that mean?" "Well, I got a B-plus." Like, no, I, like, it's, it's learning and getting back to that piece. And, and again, that hard, fast deadline. I may have turned in that, that piece and my conclusion of my written piece wasn't fantastic, but as I learned over the year, I say, "Miss Nato, I'd like a chance to go rewrite the conclusion of that paper I did in second or third quarter." That's what it's about. That's what excites us.
So, that would be part of what we look at?
Correct.
To be able to do that, say that to a parent, you know what you've got to do.
Just look at this. So, if a kid, they can't, they're saying, "I can't parallel park." What are they gonna work on? They've got everything else mastered. What are they working on in their class? Parallel parking before they're competent as a driver, right? So, but different kids are gonna be working on different things. There might be a group out that all have to parallel park together, but the four of us don't have to. We've already demonstrated we know that. We're gonna work on staying in the proper lane because we like to talk when we're driving. See how, see how personalized it just came from driving? But that's, that's what our education is gonna do.
Driving with your knees.
It just overwhelms you when I think about driving late and not, not...
But think of two hundred employees in a district, right? I mean, we're not all two facing every day, but, but even if, even if only a hundred of us were, and it's about a hundred and fifty who are, even if only a hundred of us were, that's one adult per ten children.
Yeah. And I, and I agree. And my point was not executing. My point was it must require some software or something to manage all these traffic jams and...
Or just...
Is it based, is it some...
That's, that's why we're gonna identify our competencies for our school. And then, then we have our, then we lay it out. And how are we gonna assess these competencies? The software, we can find any software to put it in there to track it. That's the least of our concerns.
So that I can get the wife and kids together?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
And, and that goes back to some of the data conversations we had earlier this year, right? We have a lot of information about our students.
Right. Right.
So, if we can work with that, we have the ability to make those shifts, and again, in a flexible way, right? Just because you're struggling with parallel parking today doesn't mean you will always struggle with parking. It's possible, right? But that may always be a hard shift for you.
Well, and, and, and a life skill, Meredith, is people will avoid parallel parking and drive around the block to find another place to park.
And there are none of them.
And that's okay.
That's right.
That's okay. You've learned another skill to say, "I, this is not a good setup for me. I'm gonna find something that works," which is a lifelong skill.
I think this is, this is absolutely bad. Also, it's the accountability of ICAN. I have oversight of what I can do is the powerful thing, again, as students lead.
And then knowing you have a cheerleader, like knowing that that's right, that they're there, like that's their new job, is to make sure you can do at least four or five of your ICANs.
Right.
Again, without, there's no sixty, but you can do this.
And they can do it in different ways.
Yeah.
You know, it doesn't, doesn't have to be paper and pencil anymore.
And in different settings.
I just, my, what scares you? When you think about doing this, what scares you?
It's change. Isn't change scary for everyone, right? So, it's been with staff. We've been talking about this for three years. We started doing this year because we had to figure out how to fail. We're not failures. We failed a couple times doing this. And we learned our mistakes. So, that, that's what I would tell you is if we didn't do this, that would scare me. So, that, that's the scary part is not doing this. And letting kids going in the world with an eighty and not having skills, that scares me. And we're doing that now. This is not. We're gonna make sure that kids leaving our school can say, "I walk in the university and I can do that. I can." That's, that's, that's empowering.
We're gonna do a couple more questions, I think, and then they're gonna come back in April.
Yep.
We said to sort of talk about more of this and, and sort of give you a progress update.
Okay.
I have a question. Is there any here, I think, where you're integrating an environment where students who aren't as motivated or tend to procrastinate have an environment in which they can because there's such a difference of pace where they're doing, "Oh, I'll just do that." It's slower pace because there's other kids who are coming at that age. Also, they have the potential to go faster or at a pace.
That's a great question. And it's one that I hear a lot, not only from kids, but also from teachers. Um, and I think, again, the sort of the strength of that environment, that's where I sort of say, we've, we've got some excellent educators. And, and what you've set up, for instance, one thing you hear a lot is that, that reassessment policy. If, if I wanna come back to you and reassess on parallel parking, I can't just not be prepared the day I'm supposed to show you and show up and go, "Ah, whatever. I'm just gonna reassess next week." It's, you're expected to provide your best product on that day. Due dates are still important. Working past the, "I wasn't quite there on that due date" is a different thing. And so, in my, in my teaching days, if students were gonna reassess me, I would typically do something like, "You need to have, make sure you've completed all of the homework from this unit of study. Um, you'll have to go back and do the corrections on the original exam that you took to make sure that you've kind of worked through the material. And you have to spend three days at lunch with me going through that material." So, there are sort of parameters that really make it about learning and not about redoing. So, your question actually is one of the things that scares me. We need to make sure that we're setting a strong standard for what is the expectation. And that's up to individual teachers and us.
And I think it's a community issue as well, right? It's partnering with parents in the education of their, their children and, and helping students take that ownership of their own learning. I will say from this being a lot of districts where this is typical practice and has been for a period of time, that is occasionally the issue, but, but largely it's, it's more what you referred to earlier. Gee, we're running out of things for these students. How do we keep coming up with things to put in front of them? And I think that culture shift is hard for people who maybe are in high school today, who've gone through an entire educational system where it's been, uh, things have sort of been handed and meted out to you with timelines and expectations. But if you come up through a system where you're taking responsibility, you have a lot of autonomy in what you're learning, and you're, you're excited and moving along at your pace and being able to grasp and engage in things that interest you, that, that motivation issue goes away. Then there's that competition too, right?
And if somebody's competitive.
And they all, it's not, well, because you don't wanna be, you don't wanna...
It, it actually allows for both types of people to be successful. If you wanna be competitive, you can be. If you wanna compete with yourself, you can be. And if you just wanna do your thing and not be competitive, you can. One of the things I come back to, even on the worst and the longest of days, is kids like Catherine and all the kids behind us. We've got a culture here, we're small enough where they'll come to us and say, "Mr. Mazzoni, I need to see you because this is not working for me. I feel like I'm not being challenged." And I sort of feel like some of our seniors will get to that point and they'll be like, "What do you got for me next? I've done everything you can put in front of me." And that's one of the things I've come to love about them, to be honest. Even on the worst day, we always have that.
So, right now, if you think of our traditional grading system, it rewards kids for playing school well, right? In a CBE, you're rewarded by learning at your own pace and what you want. And as Meredith said, all the classrooms I've visited, the kids are engaged because they want the information, that competition. "I wanna learn more. I wanna know more." And again, you still have some classes that don't always speak of that, but that's their culture that they've set up. So, it, it doesn't scare me. I think that's what you're gonna see. You're gonna have kids say, "I, you don't offer Spanish five? I'll take it on my own." We have that, right?
Yeah.
Why? Because she wants to learn. Not because of the A, because I wanna learn. Let's throw the A out. Throw the B out, throw the C out, because I wanna learn and master this. That's where we're headed.
And we'll talk about that part more in April. Next month, we're gonna talk to you a little bit about extended learning opportunities and the connection to that piece. And we'll hear about that a couple of times in the spirit as well.
And to wrap up, I'm glad this wasn't mandated in the air because I think if you shove something like this down the road and they don't understand, and they don't get enthusiastic about it, I think it'd be very difficult. I'd rather have it in this room.
Capture that statement because it's true for learners too. So, when you show up to a class and something is shoved, right Catherine? Jammed down your toe and you have to do it, you're less engaged. And that's like a perfect end to this.
I would like to say, we've had a wonderful vision. Catherine, we're glad one of the student representatives, she always has positive thoughts on this. And we appreciate her presence very much. So, we'll save that in a moment. Thank you all. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah.
Not scary.
Not scary.
Getting ahead of us.
All right. Moving along in our, just, uh, very exciting presentation. Thank you guys. We are moving along to, uh, representative of the National School Board Association. We have, um, Barrett Christine and Will Phillips. Here was Zink, hello, gentlemen.
Good evening.
And I'm going to talk about roles and responsibilities of school board members and...
Wonderful. Um, thank you. Um, appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with the New Market School Board. Um, I recognize some of the names. I don't know if I've had a chance to meet all of you. Um, you look familiar. Were you on the board the last time I was here?
Reformed.
Oh, okay. Good. So, and, and Mr. Zink, I believe you've been to some of our delegate assemblies before too. So, it's nice to meet the rest of you. Um, Meredith, thank you for the invitation. My name is Barrett Christine. I'm the executive director of the New Hampshire School Boards Association. Uh, my staff attorney, uh, Will Phillips, uh, will be joining, uh, me here in a couple of minutes. I believe you have, um, the, the handout. This was the, what I provided to the board, our roles and responsibilities. Um, I, I'm hoping that this is more of a refresher than anything else for the school board. Um, I, I usually know what school boards are in need of roles and responsibilities, hearing when the superintendent or the board chair calls us repeatedly with help over school board management issues. And we have not heard those. We've not gotten those phone calls or emails from the board chair, from Meredith. So, um, I trust things are going well. Um, and hopefully this is more of a refresher. Um, we'll take about a half hour or so. Does that sound, we're, our time is your time, but, um, uh, you know, I, I think about a half hour so we can cover this. I'm gonna be talking, uh, about, um, the, what the school board's roles and responsibilities are, based primarily on state laws, some state statutes, some Department of Education regulations, um, and offer perhaps just some general best practices. And then I'll turn it over to Will in about fifteen minutes or so, and he'll talk about what the superintendent's role, um, and responsibilities. And hopefully, if we're doing this properly and correctly, we'll be able to give the board, um, a nice presentation, not as comprehensive as the one, um, that we just... That was fantastic, though. It was a wonderful presentation. So, please pass along our kudos to the staff here, um, at the New Market School District. Um, but if we're doing our job properly, we'll be able to show and exemplify sort of how those weave and mesh and how they interrelate and how, while on one hand, they are separate, but on the other hand, um, in a good cohesive school district, um, they're working together to achieve positive outcomes for the district and students and taxpayers and all the various constituents that, that, that our school boards serve. So, if we look at, on page one of the handout, um, anybody that's been to any NHS, any, any NHSBA training, whether or not we're talking about roles and responsibilities, whether or not we're talking about goal-setting, whether we're talking about superintendent evaluations, um, NHSBA advocates that the primary role and the primary function of school boards always comes down to policy setting. School boards are at their most basic level, policymaking boards. Um, and while that's a, a best practice, we know that that's also backed up by various laws, various statutes and Department of Education regulations. Uh, if we look on page two, um, we list some of the examples of, of the Department of Education rules there. I'm gonna highlight some of the language in here. Um, and then, in, in a few minutes, Will will come up and highlight some of the language of the superintendent's roles and responsibilities and what the Department of Education will say about that. And I, I, I think that will be a good example of, of how these, how these work together. Um, in the, sort of the, the middle... In the, sort of the, the middle top, if you will, um, of page two, Department of Education Rule, uh, three zero three, whenever we see ED in front of a series of numbers, that means Department of Education rule. That's how the state abbreviates it. ED three zero three is specifically titled, "The Duties of School Boards." And, uh, under the substantive duties, it says, "Each school board shall, A, adopt policies necessary and desirable relative to the recruitment, employment evaluation, and dismissal of teachers." I'm gonna try not to read through all of these word for word. But essentially, if we're talking about the evaluation and dismissal and things, um, uh, recruitment of, of, of teachers, what are, employment-related policies, right? You have to have, in the broader context, school boards have to have employment-related policies. And if we look at B, policies, um, about adopt, um, policies about, um, uh, the control and effectually the purchase of equipment, supplies, and services, what does that sound like? If we're talking about the purchase of services and supplies and textbooks relates to our budget, right? You have to have policies relative to your budget, how you're gonna develop budget, how you're gonna authorize expenditures, things of that nature. We jump down to I, um, it's basically an anti-discrimination, uh, rule. You have to have policies that prohibit discrimination on the basis of race, sex, creed, color, and all the protected classes.
Is there a tissue by chance? I apologize. Right, I see. Thank you. It's that time of year, isn't it?
I apologize. Thank you. Thank you. So those are just three of the basic rules that we like to highlight right off the bat within the Department of Education rules. So it's not just NHSBA saying this is the best practice. This is the state of New Hampshire saying this is the responsibility of local school boards. The other thing I like to highlight too, um, the next part on page two, and if you wanna jump over to page twelve real quickly, you're probably familiar with the phrase, "The minimum standards." Educators like to throw that, that phrase around. There's what's called the Minimum Standards for Public School Approval, Department of Education Rule three zero six. And within three zero six, the entirety of that rule is probably eighty or a hundred pages, Meredith. Talks about basically everything that a school district has to do in order to be approved by the state to offer a public education. And contained within that, when we talk about the duties and responsibilities of school boards, the, the section three zero six point zero four lists, says, "School boards shall adopt policies relative to," and as you see, if you look on page twelve, it lists, I don't know, what are there, twenty-five or twenty-six various policies that, that the school board has to, has to adopt. And if you look at it, it can covers every single thing that could possibly go on in a school district. Attendance, absenteeism, bullying, hazing, homework, how credit is earned, how competencies are. We just heard a presentation on competencies and mastery. You have to have a policy on that. And everything in between. I, I won't go through all of them. I'll let you read those on, on, on your own time. But basically, um, again, you have to have policies on all of these sorts of things. And what's the wonderful value of school board policy? You notice that these rules don't, or, don't tell you what your policy has to state. They don't tell you what has to be included within your policy. But just as the presentation that we just had, and Mr. Zink, I believe it was you, said, "Well, i- it's great that this can be done locally and this can be developed locally." What's so great about that? You get buy-in then, right? You get buy-in from your community, you get buy-in from your staff, your parents, your teachers, your taxpayers. What's the other wonderful benefit? The New Market School Board can adopt policies that have the language that reflect the values and desires of, of this community. I presume, without knowing, but I presume that some of the values and desires and needs of the students in New Market are gonna be different than they may be in Manchester, or they may be in Keene, or they may be in Colebrook, right? So, it's a base of governance. And, and it's, it, the wonderful thing about it is that because we don't have the restrictions of what needs to be in the policy, but the state gives us some guidelines of what we have to have, and, you know, we, we respect that. If the policy is not working out, or if the board changes, or if something in law changes, or you've got a new curriculum or something like that, or the budget isn't working out, the board has the ability to change its policy. We have to work through a process with that, as we do with anything in public education. But you own those policies, and if you don't like it, you can change them. It's the board's pleasure to change the policies as it, as so desired. But, you know, we, 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 we talk about the rules and all the policies that are required therein. The second part of page two, um, lists various statutes, RSA, state statutes that require policies. And anybody that follows the New Hampshire Legislature, even from afar, even where, you know, not very closely, knows that, the, the, whenever there's an issue in a school district, the legislature's response is to tell local school boards to adopt the policy. Uh, and we've seen, the ones that I have listed on there are all relatively new policy requirements within the, say, as they're relatively new, maybe the last six or seven years, I'd say. Bullying, that law was from two thousand and eleven, I wanna say. Concussions, two thousand thirteen and fourteen. Use of restraints and seclusion, truancy and absenteeism, criminal background checks. Well, that's old. The legislature's been changing that law, um, quite a bit. Excuse me, objectionable course material, school lunch payments. Every year, there's another one. And I guarantee you, I'm tracking the legislature right now, I guarantee you, there'll be a couple more that come out of Concord, um, Concord this year. So, not only is it important because, um, it's a basis of school district governance and it's the, the, the method in which school boards, um, sort of have power and say over how they want to see things done within their school district, it's important because we know that, that it's ever-evolving and it's ever-changing and you need to keep track of it. What we generally recommend, um, and to the extent that you don't, I, I would recommend that you do is, do you have a policy process in place where every month you're at least reviewing a couple of policies? You may not need to change them, but I wanna make sure somebody's eyes are on, on the policy such that, about every three years or so, I think you should probably cycle through your policy manual. And if you have questions about it, if you're not sure if it's up to date, if you're not sure that it's working out, if it's not sure it's in line with best, with what the practice is in your district, talk to your superintendent. If you have additional questions about the policy, is it still legally compliant? Does it work for you? Contact Will. NHSBA does a ton of policy work. It's one of the primary services that we offer. So if you have questions about your policies, you shoot Will an email and he'll provide his best legal advice and information and get back to you to make sure that they're up to date and clear. Continuing, um, and I'll try and rip through this. I'm going a little slow. Uh, wh- wh- where are we right now in terms of, school districts and school boards operate on a cycle, don't they? And where are we right now? It's budget season, isn't it? To a degree, it's always budget season. It's not like you set your budget and voters adopt it in March and then you're done with it. We know that there's always budgetary oversight and you're looking at invoices and you're looking at, um, manifests and you're looking at bids and contracts and RFPs and all that sort of stuff. There's always budget work to be done. But, um, the second primary role and responsibility, and I'm not ranking these in order of importance. Thank you so, so much, Meredith. Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm not ranking these in order of importance by any means. That works too. Thank you. I'm not being videotaped, am I? Am I? Lovely. Well, hello, new, hello, New Market. Great. Anyway, um, budget. Obviously, there's, you know, there's, if we're in budget season right now, I presume your budget hearing is coming up soon, if it hasn't happened already. February third. All right, so you're not SB two, your traditional town meeting?
No, deliberative.
Oh, the deliberative is, okay, gotcha. Your deliberative is coming, is coming up. So you've had your budget hearings and you're all set on that. And I list some of the various statutes, um, budget preparation, limitations on expenditures, so on and so forth. The Department of Revenue Administration rules, uh, things of that nature. And we know that's hard work and we know that's, that, that's important work. Our school districts are being asked to do more and more with less and less. And we know in certain communities, um, taxpayers are tapped out and it's always a concern. We've got budget committees and, and rightfully so. They're budget watchdogs and it's a, it's a vital aspect of, of government oversight. Which is all the more reason that it's more, you know, more important for the board to be up to date on, on, on their budget and to understand the budgetary process and work through, um, a budgetary process that provides the needs and services for students while respecting what, what taxpayers can, can handle. But, so I, I don't mean to gloss over that, but, um, and, and as I said, you're always, there's always budget. It's not like you just set the budget, the voters adopt and you're done with it. You know, every meeting, there's budget work that's being done, um, by school boards. C, continuing on, this is the one, of all the things I'm gonna list, this is the one you wanna do, um, a- a- as least, as least often as possible, all right? Hire a superintendent. Uh, statute RSA one ninety-four dash C says that the SAU board, I know New Market is a single district, um, SAU, um, is responsible for hiring a school board. And Meredith, this is your second year, Meredith, is that right? Wonderful. Wonderful. And as I note there, nothing in law addresses a, a process. Each school board does it a little bit differently. We have some practices and recommendations that we're able to massage based on the nature of the board or the SAU. A five-member board is a lot easier to, to manage during a superintendent process than, say, you know, a thirty-three-member school board or a forty-member school board. Some of the SAUs do have that, do have that, that, that number of school boards. If you've got four, or five, six school boards within an SAU, um, it can be, um, it, it can be a challenging process. D, this is very important. Evaluate the superintendent. Co- extensive with hiring a superintendent. You have to evaluate your superintendent. And we, we do a whole training on superintendent evaluation, so I won't, I mean, that's a, I could talk for three or four hours on that. I'll, I'll touch on a couple of quick points here. Why is it important to evaluate the superintendent? First of all, um, while I haven't seen Meredith's contract, I've seen a lot of superintendent contracts across the state. Every one I've ever seen has a provision in there that says you gotta evaluate the superintendent. Second one, there's a Department of Education Rule, three zero three point oh one K. So you're obligated by law, contract, Department of Education Rule, to evaluate the superintendent. What other source of law or, or guidance, or what other source of, of governance might, um, require you to evaluate the superintendent on an annual basis? Haven't seen your policy manual, but I guarantee you, you've probably got a policy that says you're gonna evaluate your super, it all comes back to policy, right? And the manner and form in which evaluations take place varies across the state. What I do recommend, um, especially for, um, you know, a, a newer superintendent, Meredith, I know you were in Maine for a while, but anytime a superintendent's new to a district, don't just do, you know, a two or three-hour session in like April and sit down and chat. First of all, any superintendent's being evaluated every single meeting, right? We know that just from a practical standpoint. But the other aspects relative to evaluation that NHSBA recommends is, set benchmarks. All right, you're in a three-year contract, so guess what? We're gonna be checking in every four or six months. And, and it doesn't have to be formal, but, you know, all right, let's, let's, let's see where you are, Meredith. Six months in, Meredith, let's see where you are, you know, a year and let's, and, um, but what's important with those benchmarks? Goal setting. You have, goal setting has to be an important and a valuable aspect, um, in correlation with the superintendent's evaluation. Otherwise, what are you evaluating the employee on? It's not just for your superintendent, it's for any employee, right? Whether it's a teacher or an administrator, you have to set goals. Otherwise, what are you evaluating on? Meredith, these are the things that we wanna see done within the first twenty-four months of your employment. And we're gonna check in, you know, four months, six months, a year, whatever the case may be. Um, again, that's just a recommended practice from NHSBA. If, if, if everybody on the, if everybody on the board and Meredith's happy with the process, don't let me come in and sort of upset that apple cart. The last aspect to that, what I'll recommend though too is, in my experience, it's not very helpful when the school board says, "This is the evaluation tool we're using." There needs to be a collaboration and a conversation between the administration and the school board as to, what's going to be evaluated, how, what format is that going to take? How is that going to, you know, what process is that gonna take? What time of year is that going to be undertaken? How is that gonna relate to the goal setting and things of that nature? So, but, um, evaluate the superintendent. If you haven't, don't tell me, especially I don't wanna know, 'cause you're supposed to. So, um, but if you have questions about that, we, again, we do a lot of training on this. We've got a lot of sample materials. We've got a lot of resources if you need them. E, conduct hearings and serve an adjudicative body. From time to time, this is, this is the one that you wanna do probably least often. From time to time, the school board has to serve as sort of quasi-judicial body or serving as judge and jury relative to impacting the rights of maybe a parent or a staff member or a student. And I list some of the things there. Manifest educational hardship, long-term suspensions, transportation, bullying, residency, so on and so forth. All of those may give rise to, to a hearing, um, before the school board. If you're gonna be serving in a, in an adjudicative body and serving, um, as, as, as a hearings body or a hearings board, if you will, we need to make sure that we try and maintain some level of, um, of, of, uh, we don't wanna get too involved in the situation or the matter beforehand. Um, and I know that's can be challenging in small towns. I imagine you're on school boards because I bet you know parents, right? And I bet you know the students and I bet it's your neighbors or your kids are on the ball team together or whatever the case may be. And I know you go to Christmas parties and you know to the ball, you go to the ball games and the Christmas concert and the supermarket. People come up to you and say, "Did you hear about so-and-so? Did you hear what's going on with this teacher?" I get that you can't escape that. And you're not, you don't, you don't have to, to remain free from bias. There's, you know, there's plenty of case law, um, not from New Hampshire, but in doing some research on sort of the bias and the, has the board sort of spoiled itself? You know, s- many a courts have said, "School boards are inherently, you know, they're local people from small communities." Of course, you're going to know the parents and the teachers and the parent, and the students and things of that nature. Just be mindful about getting too much information outside of the school district and outside of what either the administration or the lawyer provides you. If you get that call or that email from the constituent, constituent, somebody pulls you aside in the, in the supermarket, just, you know, be mindful of your role, that, you know, you're gonna have to be free from bias and, and what they're telling you may not necessarily be accurate and it may only be one side of the story, right?
That's the, the heart of it, is social media.
That, it's, yes.
The only way I can avoid is just say, I, and I actually once, Meredith, with, how do you?
Distance yourself from it. And it's hard because you, you wanna be responsive to your constituents, right? And they think that that's why you got elected to the board, to hear their concerns and complaints and things. And it's a balance. It really is. I mean, I say this all the time. You know, boardsmanship is not a science. There's an, there's a lot of navigation. There's a lot of nuance to it. If, if, if you're, you know, if it's some, if it, if it's just a, a constituent calling you with, I'll say, a concern. I hate to say complaint because that's sort of, that's sort of prejudicial in a, in a, in of its own, right? With a concern. Maybe you listen to them, maybe you hear them. But more times than not, you know, NHSBA's recommendation is you filter it back through the proper administrative channels. Why do we wanna do that? Couple reasons. First, I bet you have a policy that explains what you're gonna do with these phone calls and concerns and emails from constituents. Second, who is in the best situation? Let's not even talk about the hearing aspect. Who's in the best situation to remedy the concern or the problem? Probably not a school board member. It's probably gonna be, did you talk to the teacher who you're having the concern with? Did you talk to the building-level principal who you're having the concern with about the teacher? And if not, then maybe you take it, you take it back, you know, to the superintendent. What I also recommend though, when you get that email or you get that phone call, yet, e- 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 even if the, even if the parent or the constituent just wanted to vent about something, give your superintendent a heads up. You know, Meredith, I just got off the phone with Mr. Jones and he was really ticked off about whatever the case may be. Or, you know, "Mrs. Smith just called me and apparently there's some issue in the second grade classroom." I don't know what it is, but if you hear about it, just wanted to give you a heads up about it. Cam?
So, I wanted to say here, uh, school board, um, should not be, as a whole, not be privy to specific information prior to the hearing.
Yep.
That would be from both sides, either from the administrative side that.
Generally, yeah.
We refer whatever the issue is to the.
Correct.
Administrator, the appropriate administrator.
Correct.
But we also don't wanna be having the administrator filling out here.
Correct.
With what?
That's right.
The administrative view is in case we have to go through.
Perfect.
I've, I've applied or, uh.
Perfect analysis. That's right.
I'm trying to stay in balance, I think, for, as a teacher, right?
Yeah, that's right.
And if you may be a small community, but at the same time, we have a responsibility to take care of information that could become.
Yep.
A matter of support for the board. So we have to balance.
I, I, I treat it, oh, yeah, i- i- in those situations, treat it like you're in the military, like you'll be told what you need to know on a need-to-know basis, right? Um, and you have to have some level of trust with your administrators, that they will inform you of, they will give you the amount of information that you need to know at that given time. And chances are, if, if it's, if it's at the hearing stage or you're, you know it's getting there, or it's very contentious, chances are, your, your administration's gonna be on the horn with the school district attorney anyway, who's gonna be advising them, "Okay, don't tell the board this. All right, if they're asking, you can give them this information." You know, the basic stuff, just wanna let you know, a student, you know, was, was suspended today 'cause we caught him smoking pot in the bathroom. This is a generic example. You don't need to know who, you don't need to know how much drugs he had on him, you don't need to know if the cops were called. You don't need to know how many people were in the bathroom with them, but it's. in the bathroom with them, but, you know, just a student was suspended today because of X. It may come to a hearing, so I, 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 you know, you're going to be hearing things in the community, just be mindful of what you hear, but I just wanted to give you a heads up.
So that's okay, so she's not going to say, so this is what's coming down the pipe and not you can handle yourself.
I think so, I think so, yeah. I mean, basic, basic facts about that, about what happened to inform the board, I think that's completely fine.
And then it's easy to see emails too, that's...
Yeah, you just, just not, not respond, forward them on to Meredith, for, forward them on to the attorney or whatever, have Meredith keep them in a, in a file just so that, you know, you, you, the nice thing about this, if you just forward it to Meredith, you've got that record that, that you've informed the administration.
Right, with the appropriate answer and copy to Meredith and say, I am copying this to Meredith.
Yeah, that's fine too.
Or you don't even answer it up.
Well, it, it depend, I mean, you can do one or the other thing, I mean, you can, you know, you can write back, Dear Mrs. Smith, I'm in receipt of your email. However, I've been advised not to apply, please know that I'm copying Superintendent Nato on this. That's, that's fine, that's fine. You, you have to acknowledge your constituents, I mean, that's, yeah, you have to, you have to acknowledge the constituents.
Answer them.
Yeah, right, exactly. Yep, that's what I would recommend, yep. Any other questions on that? All right, so just, I, I mean, do you have any hearing, student hearings in a couple of years, may, maybe, no? Perfect, good.
And back to, to that, to that situation where I would respond for all of us.
Usually, yeah, yeah, you're right.
Just so we...
So that chair?
The chair.
So she would say, Kim, what's up, so I have, and then you send an email.
And then the two of you coordinate, you talk to Will or you call your lawyer, you know, that's...
So copy not only to Meredith, but to Kim?
What, yeah, in one way, somebody, yeah, I mean, you know, you may have a, you, you, check your policy, you, you might have a policy on, on what sort of the, the recommended protocol is for the, the, for the board member who receives that and, you know, if you need, again, if you want to review that and take a look at if you need any, any extra recommendations, get in touch with Will and we can, we can polish that up for you. In the interest of time, just wanted to jump, uh, jump down, collect a bargain, do you do any bargaining this year?
Next year.
Next year? All right. Um, communicate with the public, keep the public informed of board actions, write to know law, RSA ninety-one A. I presume there's a website, maybe a Facebook page, maybe a principal newsletter, superintendent newsletter, board newsletter, that sort of stuff. Um, and last, strategic planning, long and short-term goals. Um, NHSBA strongly advocates that school boards develop some sort of strategic plan. Um, why do we want to do that? Because it helps with every single thing we just talked about. It helps with your budget, it helps with your policy development, it helps with your staffing levels, it helps with knowing, um, you know, when, when, when do we need to replace the windows? When do we need to buy new textbooks? When do we need to replace the roof? Um, and if you have a good strategic plan and you're able to like pull the community into the process and you get, it's not just the school board doing strategic planning, it's a community-wide strategic plan, they have ownership, they have pride, they feel important, and, and you get buy-in then too, right? If it's just the five of you sitting there scribbling out notes and saying, this is the school district strategic plan, how are you going to get buy-in? You need to hear from teachers, you need to hear from parents and students and constituents and taxpayers and everything else. Um, I know a number of years ago, SAU sixteen, um, did a very comprehensive strategic plan. Um, and they opened it up, they said, if you, whoever wants to serve on, and they had various subcommittee, they had a technology subcommittee, a facility subcommittee, so on and so forth. They said, if you want your voice heard, we will find a place for you. So come on and whatever community, so some committees had twenty people, some committees had four people, but the community was able to, to, it was, it was theirs then, it was, it was a community-wide strategic plan. So they had buy-in, um, they, 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 the community owned the process. So five years into that strategic plan, when they needed the bond to like do the roof or they needed extra money, the budget for new computers, we've already gotten the plan and this plan was approved and developed by the community. You get a lot more buy-in that way, don't you? Um, so, I think that's it for me relative to school board roles and responsibilities. Any questions for me before I turn it over to Will?
Yeah.
Sir?
Um, it's, the board's responsibility, as I understand it, to set policy for example in class.
Yep.
So we want no more than sixteen children per class.
Okay, yep.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, you can absolutely do that.
Once that policy is established, then the superintendent is required to...
Implement.
...manage it.
Yep, manage it, correct.
And if there is eighteen in one class...
Yeah.
I would think if I was the superintendent, I would say, by the way, your policy is sixteen, but we've got eighteen because we've got...
Right, for whatever reason.
Whatever, whatever.
Yep.
Um, so I get that.
Yep.
Um, how many, um, how superintendent manages the staff? I'm going to put Mary here, I'm going to put Paul here as an instructor...
Sure.
Um, under the superintendent's purview?
Generally, yes, yeah, the, the, the stu-, the, let's think about it this way, the school board has one employee that it has responsibility over, superintendent. Superintendent is responsible for managing the rest of the employees. That may tie into a variety of things, though, your example of what teacher is going where. Generally, it's the superintendent's scope of authority to assign teachers to certain classrooms and responsibilities.
Certainly not board.
Right, correct.
Because it's a matter of trust from the board as well.
I'm sorry?
It's a matter of trust from the board.
Yeah.
Is that what you're going to...
Yeah, I mean, I would, I, I, I would, I would not advise a school board to getting into the assigning of teachers to certain responsibilities.
And, and, and our employee is superintendent and, um, I guess, I, I think you answered the question.
Okay, great.
Um, whether, um, how many English teachers it should be, not...
Basically, what you're saying is not the board's job to micromanage the...
No, I'm saying it's not, it's my understanding, it's not the board's responsibility to, and I don't want to use the micromanage term when I'm trying to say...
Right now, I think I know what you're saying.
It's not the board's responsibility to manage staffing.
There, there's a difference between, uh, maybe I can explain it this way. The board governs the school district via policy, via budget. The superintendent manages the day-to-day operations of the school district. And maybe when Will gets to some of the responsibilities and what the statute says about that, maybe that will provide some clarification, but, yeah, the, I mean, the, the superintendent is generally in charge of, of establishing sort of the day-to-day structures, if you will, in accordance and in line with board policy. Does that help explain it?
Yeah, it does. Um, yeah.
Okay, great. And maybe, maybe Will's, uh, presentation will help expand on that a little bit more as well too. I went way over time, I apologize, but I thank you for your involvement.
Well, Barrett stole my, my biggest line, which is the school board governs and the, and the administration administers, but that's really what it comes down to. Um, just because we ended up, not, well, not completely ended up on, on, uh, complaints from the public, but, uh, that one actually helps demonstrate, you know, where these lines are. And, um, when I was rudely over there looking at my phone, what I was doing was looking for your policy on, um, public complaints. So your policy is, is, it mirrors the, um, our sample policy, which is KEB, and it is, so our sample policy is in that package. And so if you receive a complaint about something, um, there's actually two of them, look at that policy because it, it helps you understand who, who do I go to? Um, and I think, I think we finally landed at, if you do get, you know, if you do get that call, uh, you want enough information so that you can relay the issue to the right personnel. Uh, and usually, if you're an individual school board member, it would be, my recommendation would be the chairperson and the, and the superintendent, unless for some reason, the superintendent is the, the subject of the complaint or something like that. Um, one thing about the email, if you get the complaint in an email, um, just make sure you don't forward it to everybody. Um, or if, um, if the email went to every board member and you just want to make sure it gets to the superintendent, make sure you don't hit reply all. Um, so you're replying to the person who sent it, it went to everybody and their brother, you can do reply to the person and then type in, uh, the superintendent's address and then send that and, and just, just to prevent things. But, but, so your roadmap for receiving the, the complaints is, is in the policies in the K area. Um, I think I had one more piece just on that, same issue. Oh, it had to do with the, um, part of the rationale and, and the whole hearing process. Um, w- we did get away from, uh, what school attorneys were fearful of back in the nineties when I first started representing school districts and into the two thousands, which was, um, it was unclear in New Hampshire whether or not we followed a juror standard for school boards presiding over hearings. We don't, that's good news. Um, but at the same, uh, at the same time, one of the reasons you're distancing yourself is when you hear a case about an individual, individual rights, um, you have to decide it on what you heard during that proceeding, there's a record. And so if you're, you know, you heard something three months ago in an email from somebody, that can't come into the case. And so the more you, uh, push back or try to get more information, you're, you're kind of clouding that and then, and, you know, I, I'm glad I can't count it on, you know, my hands and my feet together, maybe just my hands, but the number of times I've been in the deliberation on a hearing and to hear a board member, well, I heard this, uh, you know, so the hearing's over and all of a sudden they start to talk about information that didn't come out in the hearing. So you're, you're trying to keep yourself from that, make sure that you're deciding the case on the information that was presented to you anyways.
So, okay, you've heard, follow the rules, whatever, follow the rumors. I don't, do, do I, excuse me, Paul, do I say, listen, I've heard way too, too many rumors, like I, I wouldn't want to pull myself out of that conversation? Do, or do, and now if I were Meredith, would that, like, okay, I know, I think I know too much, or I just, I've heard too many rumors, do I, do you move that?
Uh, you, well, that, that's a whole different, that's a whole different, but the answer is...
Two-hour training.
Yeah, the answer is if there's...
That's when I call them, together.
Yeah, it's a subjective determination. If you think you cannot, um, if you can't rule based on the information in front of you, then you should recuse yourself.
Or I would just be afraid to do the wrong thing.
But you also, but elected officials also have a duty. They have a duty to serve and to, they have a duty to vote and they have a duty to do these hearings. And so, you, you know, you're, you, you, there's, there's a conflict there and living in a small community, this, this is a huge community compared, I live out in Jaffrey and there's some towns out there where you know everybody and they all show up on Saturday at the recycling center, but, uh, so it's, it's impossible not to know things or to hear things, especially with social media, as you say. And, and it's, it's really, any time, uh, I, that was the other piece I was going to write down. One of the things that you might practice is, what is your stock answer when somebody approaches you in the gro-, have that ready, be, be prepared. Oh, that's, that's something to do with, have you talked to the principal? You talked to the pro-, okay, so I, why don't you contact the superintendent's office? And then even if that little exchange happened in the grocery store, send an email to the superintendent so that she knows and, and to the chair because you, you don't want the chair to be surprised by the, well, I, I told so-and-so and, anyway, so creating that, uh, an email that's just two parts, chairperson and superintendent. Everybody knows what, that somebody's got a complaint and, um, if you hear it percolating six months later, then there's maybe some accountability issues. Um, but anyway, so I just, I thought that dovetailed well. Uh, but looking at the, um, just as there are statutes and rules that set out the policy duties of, of school boards, similarly, there are the same for superintendent. So, starting with, I think it's page seven is where we start with the superintendent's role. And, um, what we've done is we've included some of the substantive duties that are set out in ED three oh two oh two, and, and in some ways, they align directly to the pieces that, that were in the, the, uh, board material. So on page, if you compare seven to two, three oh three point oh one, which relates to school boards, paragraph A is adopt policies necessary and desirable to control and effectuate the recruitment, employment, evaluation and dismissal of teachers and other employees. But then when you look at the superintendent's duties, uh, on page seven, it's nominate all certified staff and appoint other employees in accordance with state law, the rules of the state board and school board policies. And then, um, later on, I think we included in here, but you'll, you'll see that there's A B, it goes A through R, but we've only included a handful of these. Uh, but one of them is also managing the personnel. So again, you're, you're establishing the class size sixteen. Uh, you're providing a budget that will support that many teachers. And then you're basically, by setting that policy, you're directing the superintendent to manage the class sizes, manage the personnel so that you're, you have enough math teachers to do that, but you don't have too many Spanish teachers or, or something like that. That's, that's her task and not always an easy task because as you know, the, one year you'll have one hundred kids in a grade and the next year they'll be eighty. Um, and then, so first you've got, so first the way we structured it is you have the superintendent's role is implement school board policy. So all of these examples that we gave from there, um, include in there, in accordance with school board policy, in accordance with local school board policy, and these are all from the Department of Education. Then you move on to, um, and, and maybe you've all encountered this, but how, uh, professional staff in New Hampshire works somewhat different than everyone else. So professional staff, as, as we understand it, um, is basically teachers, principals, guidance counselors, librarians and, and nurses, and there's, um, there are other personnel as well, but the rules, uh, that you find or the, the, the statutes that apply to professional staff that we have here, it's one eighty-nine thirty-nine, uh, which essentially says that the superintendent is the one who nominates all of your teachers. And it uses, it uses the word, uh, teachers. But then in, um, one eighty-nine fourteen A, that's the non-renewal statute. Teachers is defined to specifically include principals and, and a few other, uh, professionals as well. So in, in, in this context itself, that the only way you can hire a teacher is if the superintendent nominates that person. If the superintendent doesn't nominate that person, whether it's a person who's been there for twenty years or not, the superintendent doesn't nominate that person, you can't elect that person, which is the, the term that you use for hiring the teacher. Um, same with the principal. Once you get away from the teachers and the principals, guidance counselors, librarians, it gets a little, um, gets a little grayer. Uh, everyone else falls more within, uh, what happens with your support staff, with your custodians, with, so this would include, the what?
Be a policy around that stuff.
Right, um, but, but the, so the, the statutory and the, um, regulatory basis for it is slightly different. Um, so the statutes are very clear on the teachers and the, um, and the principals, but for everyone else, it's, as, as Barrett said before, you've got one employee and, um, superintendent has all the rest. And so she's responsible for those hirings, but it's within, in accordance with the local board policies. So, you know, there are several different types of policies that you can establish that, um, Meredith would be required to implement, um, relative to recruitment, uh, evaluation policy, for instance. So all these little steps that have to do with personnel. But, um, also, so back to page two, then we have, uh, no, I want to go below that, I'm sorry. I think it's page three. Uh, page three, establish the school district's budget and provide budget oversight. I'm not going to go through each and every one of these, but, um, so for, uh, under one ninety-four C, each district is responsible to, to, uh, provide superintendent services and then it enumerates, so this is the statute as opposed to the, the regulations. Um, a, a number of things through the, the administrative office. So we start with, uh, paragraph two, the organizational structure and implementation of payroll, so pay... so paragraph A, payroll, paragraph B, recruitment, supervision, evaluation of staff, and so forth.
What was the words?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm jumping all over, I'm on page eight now.
Woo, okay.
Yep.
That's why you lost me.
Well, I'm trying, I'm trying to be mindful of the time here. And I think when we, sometimes we do this in a half an hour and sometimes we do this in three hours, so it varies from time to time. But...
Which, which is referred to as a...
Okay, so on paragraph eight, under 194C, page eight, sorry, thank you Barrett.
That's the eighth, okay.
Okay. Jumping all over the place. So that's the statute that requires school districts to provide various superintendent services. And then though, before I walk through, which I'm not going to do step by step, that statute then is further, given further body in the Department of Ed rules. So I gave you a couple of those a few minutes ago. But when you, when you look through the superintendent services, you'll see that this is really how the, you know, how the district operates. The school board is setting forth the law of the district and the superintendent is responsible for implementing those policies.
Can you go back to eight, page eight?
Okay.
See, can you define superintendent services? What does that mean? Superintendent services? Does that mean roles or responsibilities? Or...
The services are the things that follow, all of those items. So the list of items that follow are the services that you're required to provide through certified superintendent.
So another way to say is superintendent is responsible for...
Yes, yes.
So it is superintendent is...
Yes.
I got you.
Part of the flex in the language there is for very, very small districts. They, the statutes, they, well, they allow part-time or they allow a, what's the other?
Contractor.
No, but there's a lower certificate for smaller than...
District administrator.
So if it's fewer than 400 students in one school building or something like that, there's a, I might have it wrong.
District administrator.
Yeah, yeah. So it's a different level of administrator. So it wouldn't be a superintendent providing the services, it would be someone else. Right. Yeah. So, but these are all enumerated and here's what we consider superintendent services. And then in the Department of Ed rules, for which I gave you a small sample of them, you can see this one ends at R. And we only gave you five or six of them, but, you know, there's a full complement to go with the ones for the school board.
Mr. Zick, things that you asked about the responsibilities, these are the day-to-day responsibilities that the superintendent is ultimately responsible for under the 194C, the things listed on pages eight and nine. So we're talking about whose responsibility is whose. It's not the school board's responsibility to manage the payroll and the cash flow and the bills, superintendents. It's not the school board's responsibility to manage the recruitment, supervision, and evaluation of staff other than superintendent, superintendent's responsibility to do that.
I get that. I was simply confused by...
Services versus responsibility. Yeah. It's old language, it's, I mean, that language is probably 50 years old.
Yeah, but I mean, if I were to cross out superintendent's, superintendent's roles, am I correct?
Yeah.
Saying the superintendent is responsible for arrangement, mediation, background...
That's right. That's right.
Right, right.
All that sort of stuff.
Right. And then when you, when you go back to page seven, which is the substantive duties of superintendents, these actually flesh out and are companions to the statutory duties. So it's you, superintendent, you're responsible for all these things and by the way, that's what the statute says, the district is responsible for providing through superintendent services. So they're, they kind of have to be read together and the language is a little sloppy.
So it's kind of, kind of developing and maintaining accounting systems that you've got on the rules, which is huge. This one then, under page eight, gets into the detail of what that includes. Is that correct?
Actually, it's more the other way around, but it doesn't really get into the details. So the statute is that the, the statute is, in the hierarchy, is bigger than the regulation. So it requires the districts to provide these services. The district is also required to have a superintendent if it's a certain size and then the superintendent is required under the regulations to provide these things. So there's a, it's a circuitous...
I'm not a superintendent.
You're right. But it's a circuitous way to get there and it's so that it covers the various iterations of what a school district and SAU might look like. On, moving to, if you move to page 11, we have a matrix that we've just put together that how do, how do the roles and responsibilities of the two bodies coexist? Because they, you do, as a board, have duties with respect to every single one of these. You know, when you turn to page 12, you can see all the policy items. And then looking back on those statutes and those rules, there's a lot of correlation. So with superintendent services, the board's function is to hire a competent superintendent. And then the superintendent's function is to effectively provide professional leadership. But you walk through each one of these, the board establishes with the superintendent the goals, the superintendent works to establish, to meet the goals. Policy governance, the board makes the policy and the superintendent not only implements the policy, but brings policies, recommended policies forward to the board for consideration. So for instance, students who don't have money in their meal account, that's a board decision. There's no federal law that tells you or state law that tells you one way or the other. And I can tell you that some districts, if the deadbeat parent doesn't pay, we're not feeding the child. And on the other hand, you've got, we're not letting that child go hungry that day. And that's, that's a decision for, for the board to make and the superintendent's going to come to you and say, "We've got a, you know, we've got an emerging population, we can't, you know, we need to serve these populations." So the superintendent comes with the recommendations, but ultimately you're making the policy and then the superintendent has to implement the policy. But walking all the way through there, you can see that there's a, it's not a one-way street on either one of these. One of the superintendent's main functions is to advise the school board on all of these items. You can't give me a $20 million budget and 16, you know, a 16-class size. This is not going to work. Either you're going to have to move the budget or you're going to have to move the class size. And that, that comes from the superintendent. So without going through each and every one of these, you'll just see that there's a companion for these items. And then the pieces that we've included, just as attachments, you've got the policy development, which Barrett talked about before, or the policies that are required under the DOE rules. And then for, we've included some sample policies that really have to do with governance and really your function. With school board member authority, this, this is, again, your policy, it does express some basic legal standards, but within your own policy, this is our sample policy, but I looked at your policy and it's essentially the same thing. So board members shall not assume responsibilities of administrators or other staff members. The superintendent has very specific duties under the regulations. This policy says you're not going to assume those. So where it says that the school board is responsible for evaluating the staff, it means you're not and you won't assume those responsibilities, but, so there are various pieces of that. Then you've got the roles and duties of the board chairperson. There's no statute in New Hampshire that describes, here's what a school board chair does. It's done by the local board itself, but the reason the policy itself is important is because it's by this that you're giving general authority for certain things to occur between the chairperson and the superintendent that don't necessarily apply to everyone else. So the conversations that happen every time you have a meeting about agenda, those are generally the chairperson and the superintendent. No, we can put that off for next month because we've got a busy night that, that time. It doesn't mean that you can't have communications, but the person who's authorized to speak on behalf of the board relative to agenda setting is by your policy, the chairperson. And so there are a number of items in here that the board as a whole has designated fall within the function of the chairperson. A school board can, you know, designate, delegate by majority vote almost any function that it has, but you need to do it in a formal way. This policy's the starting point. So next we have school board member ethics, school board member, this is more a right-to-know one. So on page 15, member use of electronic communication devices. I think we included this in the materials for one particular school, school board, but basically means don't, don't text each other during public meetings, but...
I get it.
Right, right, yeah, little things. Also, don't pass notes back and forth, same thing. But, but, you know, there are, there are times, you know, maybe we've been at a school board meeting and, and you see one guy over here and then all of a sudden you see the other one over there and then you see over there, yeah.
Doing it properly.
Yeah. So, so there's a thing called the right-to-know law and public meetings, but so that policy was in there for a particular reason.
So if that happens, they can take your phone. Is it right to know?
There's a subpoena, public right-to-know law, but that doesn't stop somebody from issuing a subpoena, right? It's not fair assessment, well, you've got more information than I have.
Yeah, so if, once somebody files a lawsuit, all of a sudden there's all sorts of discovery things that are open.
What you couldn't do, though, would be to start deleting those text messages. If somebody filed a right-to-know law petition alleging, you know, you're going to, you have to maintain what's on your phone at that time. Unless you're working with them.
Unless you're using a Casio.
Right. Right.
Mary, you're key. Mary, I was wondering. No, I'm sending a message.
The BEDH is not part of what we were doing tonight. Again, that was included for another board. Board employee communications, so this is, this is, how do you communicate with staff? And again, it, I didn't check to see if you had, what your policy looks like. I assume you have one that either is exactly like this or similar to it. But, but look to that because that's similar to the one for public complaints. But remember that the superintendent is the supervisor of all the employees and ideally things go that way.
What is, as a practical matter, if, say, a board member has got a question?
Should come to me.
Not to me.
Correct. And I, it's board communication to staff, policy communication, policy to work, it's, oh, sorry, staff communication, no, second. Will be communicated to employees through the superintendent. Superintendent's, so you send it to me, I will forward it to Lisa or whoever's the appropriate person to answer it and then either I'll have them reply directly to you or reply to me, but really they should be replying to the whole board. Because it depends on the nature of the issue, but if one person has a question, sometimes we assume that other people might have that same question and we try to share that information.
So we have a question of, of, so, and you and Greg and I invite working... And Greg sends an email to the triads that says, "I was following a meeting the other night, he answered that." What happened?
So again, under typical circumstances, those communications would be going through me. There was some, there has been some practice that hasn't followed that, I would say historically in this district, and that's a situation we've worked through as a wall. And it can present challenges in the kind of the communication, which is why we try to iron those things out. And when things come up, if it's not following your stated command, then it's on me to go to the chair and sort of say, "Hey, Andy, can you help with this because we are drifting from our roles?" Right? The board is a board, only one is the board, right? It's some of those challenges. Committees are a little bit different.
Yeah, I was about to say, the example was a subcommittee.
Yeah, so questions, questions about meetings, isn't it?
So, so within that subcommittee, you have a body that makes a decision and it might not be the chair, but you've delegated, you know, "Al, can you communicate with the facilities director and get the answers to these four things?" And then you come back, so now you're, you have been charged with the responsibility and the authority to go discuss this with, with the personnel. But one of the problems with school board communication with employees is coercion.
Yeah.
You know, when you're the employee and the school board member is talking to you and asking you questions that maybe you shouldn't be answering for confidentiality reasons or because there's, there's internal personnel issues occurring, it's difficult for them to say, "I know that, you know, you're the boss of my boss, but, you know, I respectfully declined to answer you. You know, I'm, I'm the part-time custodian, you know, working on the boiler or something."
So is it, is it, is it clear as, should no communication between board members and employees?
Again, I would say the committee is, makes that difference.
You said no?
Yeah, I don't think, because it isn't that clear.
No, no, it's, it...
You can talk to them, it's that request for information or action. As an employee, I'm compelled to not take that on myself about the superintendent knowing. If someone brings an action to you, it's...
I understand you can't do this, right? And that's, because I, I, I remember this, right? I mean, I was on, I've been on the town council and had communication between council members and employees.
But there's an...
Oh, God.
Yes.
But I can't say, Rick, will I have to please come follow my street?
Right, right. Well, nor, nor should you be plying the employee for information. You know, if you're charged, if the board has charged you with a specific task that falls within its governing purview as opposed to administrative purview, so you've been delegated to find out this particular set of information, the superintendent should know about this anyway. And, and, and so you're having that conversation in that very limited capacity. But you, you know, you shouldn't be, you know, "So what do you think about the principal? Has he been coming in on time?"
I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, talking in, sometimes in generalities, it's, it's a little difficult to give you, it's always this answer, because it...
General questions are hard to give specific advice.
Yeah, right. But it, but it's like, you know, it's like the conversation that happens with the neighbor who's got a student who's having an issue and they start talking to you in the supermarket. So if the employee brings something to you, same thing, you want to redirect that employee to the, to the superintendent. If, if the issues, if the issue involves anybody but the superintendent, there's a line of communication that should occur. And ideally, you're addressing it at the lowest possible level, so it's the building principal or the head of custodial services or what have you. It's only when it's the superintendent that's really the subject and if that's the issue, probably you should be talking to an attorney maybe, or talking to Barrett or me.
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
I'll, Derek, can you explain? I don't know, I feel like...
Yes, you did.
Which, it reminds me, we, for a while, this was just, it was chaos.
There were some challenges, a new market for a period of time, absolutely.
And I will say that the... And I will say that the one thing I, we did have at board wasn't administration that could say to us, "You gotta go through two."
Yeah.
Wouldn't we? And it's like kept us on track. We had had...
Mike was a good placeholder for a couple of years. Is that what you hear? Okay, gotcha, gotcha.
In my, in my other administration. And we wouldn't have been able to, this, that would have been better done.
Sure, sure.
So now, you know, Barrett's trying to rein us back in and it's a hard job. Because some sense aren't going right.
Habit and past practices are sometimes difficult to get out, get out of the, get out of the way of, so.
And that's especially true when you had a power vacuum.
Yeah.
So when you had a weak leader where the board, just by necessity, you know, you did redirect those complaints to the superintendent, but guess what? Three weeks later, you got the same complaint. And then six months later, you got, "And I went to this principal." And that creates a problem because now, you know, you're becoming involved and it's hard to break those habits. But that's why I think Barrett started with your chief response. You've got policies and then it's hire a good superintendent and then evaluate and set goals with the superintendent. And that's one of, I have seen that goal, you know, diminish the number of complaints that are made directly to board members, so.
And I think to your point there, it's a core of the way is that, that for instance, boards find that balance, especially when there has been those changes, is to have those more frequent evaluative conversations and check in on those.
I do like that.
And I think that...
Trust, trust is...
You know where you are.
Trust, trust is a big thing. Once the superintendent's established that trust, it's a lot easier for the board to say, "Just call the superintendent because you know that it will be addressed."
If I can follow up on your comments for a second. The presentation that we had earlier today was, it was also reflective of what the board should be doing. We assess our students, right? We assess our administrators, right? The board needs to assess itself, right? Our students are learning, our staff members have professional development, our school board should have professional development as well, which is where NHSBA comes in. Same things we're asking of our students, our administrators, we should expect from the board ourselves.
And I think that goes back to what you're saying of, we were in the fire mode.
Yeah, 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 no, I know that.
And now if we're not, we really need to put systems in place to say, we're gonna have quarterly evaluation meetings or whatever, or quarterly retreats as opposed to annual retreats.
That's right.
To really get us all on the same page, build the trust in a different way.
Back to that strategic planning.
Right. And if you do it, if you do it for, you know, two, three hours every couple of months, you're not blocking off like a 10-hour retreat on a Saturday sometime, right? And it'll take time to build up, but you'll get there and there are resources available like NHSBA and other consultants we work with, so.
So I can keep beating the horse? But do you have any other questions? I mean, I covered the main issues that I think we need to. As Barrett's mentioned, where I'm available for policy responses or governance issues and we provide other types of training. You had on the agenda the right-to-know, so, you know, we're happy to come down and do that as well. That one's more fun for me, but...
Always worth a refresh with those. That's an evolving area of the law.
Yeah, always, always.
Well, if somebody's going to the delegate assembly on Saturday, I'll be doing a non-public session presentation that day, so.
Thank you, thank you, Tony. We learned a great deal.
Wonderful. If I could just say a couple of closing remarks. First of all, thank you for having us back to Newmarket. It's been a few years. We're always happy to come back. Second, thank you for taking advantage of NHSBA services. This is what we're here for. Training, policy work, legal help. Let us know what we can do to help. Third and last, most importantly, thank you to the Newmarket School Board for your continued membership in NHSBA. Without your membership and paying dues to NHSBA, we're not able to provide these sorts of services. We're not able to have a staff attorney around and we're not able to provide policy services and training. So that is really, we earnestly greatly thank you for your continued membership and for taking, taking, taking advantage of our services. As always, let us know what we can do to help.
I just want to add, I appreciate that, because you work at the board association. That's on the map.
Thank you.
State of care, legislature, keeping school boards and superintendents informed about those actions.
Absolutely.
It's a, it's a big process and in a state like New Hampshire where we have 400-plus legislators, legislators even, it can be hard to say on top of all.
It's a challenge, to say the least, but we're happy to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. All right. That was a good interview. And when I sent something for review, it was very, very quick. Barrett got back to me very quickly, so I appreciated that very much.
Absolutely.
So, thank you again. And we'll just go ahead and finish up the few other items that we have. We've had a chocolate full night, and I learned a great deal, I hope you guys have too. All right, Meredith, are there any highlights from your superintendents or superintendents?
Sure. I keep it very brief. We are still, our calendar is still under review, so we're waiting to keep that up. Association, hopefully have that for you the next meeting so that we can potentially have a calendar ready before the February break, but sometime in the next month or two. We, we have some documents, got that, but then, have you, are you asking parents, is this just, is just you being looking at it or we have... Right now, our draft is out there for parents to review and we have requested feedback and it's posted with our meeting materials. Right now, the, again, the language of the contract is 181 students a day, so deviate from that existing practice will require some info from the association, so we're waiting for that. Tapper mentioned it before she left, but we have, we had a parent night this week with about eight or 10 parents we attended to talk about technology and our next one is Tuesday the 23rd at the New York City High. Again, just talking about the logistics of the technology rollout there. February 3rd is our deliberative session. I wanted to thank, they approved help. Several of us met with them yesterday just to talk about ways we can partner with them as a community health sector, sort of share resources and information and training and help, help each other in supporting the community and meeting the needs of folks here. Today, the Newmarket Business Association Education meeting that, President Monty joined us to talk a little bit about some of those competency-based things that we were speaking about earlier. Friend of those, one of the people involved actually early on, New Hampshire made the move towards competency-based education away from the traditional deep-time model of education and he works not far from here. So he came to meet with the folks there and give some explanation of what that might look like and talk about some work that he has done around the state with developing mentor programs. So that committee's given you a meeting to think about how we might bring community-involved awards there. We're still packing out some of those pieces, but we'll keep you informed about that. The only other thing I wanted to say, which was in your packet that came hot in the mail today, just an update on where we are with the infrastructure fund, but we passed step two, which is the committee recommended it. Now the governor has expressed his support for it and so that proposal will go before the executive council, like you said, the end of January. And we anticipate final proposals to be complete by late January to early February, so we should know the status of that 400-ish, 430,000 dollars sometime around that period, which again, are some things that were either already included in the building project or were in the alternate proposals for the building project. So that's good news for us. It allows us to expand that scope a little bit and there are some other themes that we have. That's it, from me.
Lisa, I know some, do you want to go through the warrant? Do you want to do that now?
Do you have a copy in your packet?
Yes.
We do.
Just like, not to hit those. Oh.
I got two.
So, I guess I just want to bring up the article number two. If they come up with the budget committee, they were looking at the number there for 20 million and that includes 20 million, 530 or 31 on the warrant. That includes the food service and grants. So it's total money plus the bond payment.
And they asked for a sort of info sheet for the possession.
Summary, yes. And if you go back to the budget packet, there was a, we discussed 17 million quite a bit.
Right.
Then we had the additional expense for food service, rams and bond payment, which there's no discussion that needs to be paid, so it just gets a little different that way. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I don't know that you really need to read it, but we need to have your approval to the warrant as written. So we had a public hearing on this, although it was written.
So, I'm looking at what's on my table. I see the warrant article, the signatures based on, you said one with all five signatures, correct? As well as the MS, DSB, two copies.
The default budget.
Default budget?
Yeah, DSB. But you've already approved that now.
Okay, so we just signed those as well. Great.
So we go ahead. That will be approved. Oh, we're just reviewing it. We haven't been too long on it.
Yeah, just reviewing it. I just wanted to...
The RAC required, Mike.
Have you look at it and also the budget committee has already assigned EMS seven, so that would be received.
So just these two, is that what you're saying?
Two copies of all of these, you have. Two copies.
The next thing on the agenda, committee reports. Are there any committees that have met since our last meeting? Was anything?
SST meeting is next.
Okay. We had a professional development meeting today. I asked a question as I often do, have started a whole big discussion, which I think Tapper's in will be helpful at some point, but really looking at goal setting for the teachers in the district and how they relate, what is it tied to, how are we measuring them, how are they communicated among staff to achieve the best results for individual teachers and students, so that sort of, and how professional development is offered and provided. Well, my one question started a whole thing that I had to depart really soon.
We could be there a lot longer, Cam.
So, but just sort of looking at that whole thing, my question sort of was, if an individual teacher, we look to the example of changing a curriculum for a specific grade level class, and I said, okay, if that teacher's goal is to modify that, is he or she speaking with the other teachers in that discipline in the school to say, "Oh, this is what I'm doing. What are you doing?" So we can relate it to the best outcome for the students. So that just started the whole conversation. So, it's exciting to be a part of professional development, maybe to see ways that the teachers, unique ways that teachers are felt in their skills, employing their craft even more to start students in business. So I appreciate that opportunity. Anything else from anyone else? Any committee?
The joint conference, that's Thursday afternoon.
And we're having a presentation for... All right, the next thing on our agenda is approval of amendments, public and non-public in the January 8th meeting, Newmarket School Board. I seek a motion to approve those amendments. On a motion from Ms. Oliver and a second from Ms. McKenney, are there any amendments to set minutes? Hearing none, I seek a vote to approve them. All those in favor of approving the amendments, say aye. Aye. Approved for aye. The next thing, Al, do you have, I seek a motion to approve manifests. Any votes?
I believe that we approved the manifest for a total of, oh, 1,444,000, oh, no, 1,444,065,067. That's the total of the payroll manifest, the accounts payable manifest.
A motion from Ms. Oliver and a second from Ms. McKenney to make such amendments, they noted. Any questions or discussion about that? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of approving the amendments, say aye. Aye. The next thing on our agenda is the RFQ for the local works. Mike, this is, yes, Mike is at that tonight, so I think that it might make sense for us to defer that and lock this into any trouble with the fire someone until February 1st if definitely you guys are willing to do.
And just to keep that brief, we weren't able for time to review that at our last building committee meeting on the 11th. It was, it had been included in the acting of the, ran out of time. We have many meetings occurring that evening, so we're working on scheduling the building committee today, hopefully February 1st in order to be able to review that prior to the board file, which is on November 1st.
I would appreciate that.
Actually, one other, I have another that I left in my report, which is, our auditor is scheduled to come to our board meeting on February 1st to give the annual audit report. We wanted to share with you the financial statements that will be included in that and so you have them ahead of time. I will send those down. We're not going to go over them tonight, so just know that's coming and these are not known. Yes, and know that they are required to be in our common court, our annual school report, so that may be out around the same time of audit report. We wanted to make sure you also had it before anyone.
Oh, so you guys. The last item, we had a brief non-public session prior to this meeting to review a leave request and we need to vote on the leave request right now. I seek a motion to approve the leave request that was discussed in the non-public session. Sorry. On a motion from Ms. McKenney and a second from Ms. Zink to approve the leave request discussed in the non-public, any discussion that anyone has? Any confidentiality there?
I'd note that it is pursuant to, we can just contract.
Hearing none, other, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of approving the leave requests, say aye. Aye. Approved. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is February 1st at 7:00 PM. I appreciate everyone's patience with that. We've learned quite a bit about a variety of things. It's been an exciting night and I appreciate everyone's patience with that. Anything else for Richard?
Do we need to appoint?
Yes. As the school board association member said, there is a delegate session this Saturday and it'd be great if we could send one or two delegates to the session. Can you show the details in your notes on the committee?
I have it in my last meeting. January 20th, 8:10.
Is it at their office?
It is in Concord here. January 20th, 10:00 AM, 3:00 PM, it's at their office in Concord.
Any more members available interested in attending today's meeting?
I can't.
Anybody who would be willing to, that would be great. And we look forward to hearing what we learn from the meeting. And we'll expect to deliver a report back. All right, anything else? Hearing none. I at 9:10, did I get it right now?
You did.
Good. I seek a motion to adjourn immediately. My motion from Ms. McKenney and a second from Ms. Zink to adjourn meeting at 9:10. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Meaning adjourned. Thank you, everyone. All right.